There we go.
Right now?
Yep, they're on.
It's on.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Welcome to our study session, which is a special meeting. Today, March 31st. Roll call, please.
Commissioners, Dever?
Here.
Chair Vanessaian?
Here.
Kevanyan?
Here.
Wagner?
Present.
Chair personally.
Chair personally, commissioners. As this is not a regular commission meeting and we don't have an agenda or a report, staff prepared several documents for you. And I would like to go over some of the information. We do have an agenda. It's a Brown Act public notice information about today's study session, which is... I want to read the title of the session. Can you help me, please? I don't have the Brown Act form in front of me. Can you please just read the title?
She gonna read it? Should I read it, or you gonna have her read it?
Okay, Marion will read that. I don't have it.
The agenda was posted on the bulletin board on March 28th, 2011.
The notice, but there was no agenda. Thanks.
Okay. So we will move on with the document that staff prepared for today's study session. On the first, on your pile, you'll see the ordinance, which is the original ordinance approved back in 1999, as well as the 2009 amended version of the ordinance. The next one is comprehensive list of art events, programs, projects that are produced in the city of Glendale altogether. It's not the perfect list, but it has all the programs that are produced by other departments other than parks, community parks, and the cultural affairs department. And finally, since 2008 July, we haven't had an update of the strategic plan report. We prepared another list, which gives you the most updated information that Cultural Affairs and Arts and Culture Commission has supported and sponsored. The last page is most updated list of the events, programs, projects, and initiatives. This is just to assist you with your today's discussion.
Okay. So sort of wrote some talking points. So first thing I'm thinking was to go over the basis of our being, which is through
Would you like us to read out loud and see if it works? Or do you want us to take a minute and read? Or how do you want us to go through? Should we go one by one and see if we're okay? And then if need be, we'll ask Mr. Duran to see if it works out right.
Okay, we can do that.
Read through the ordinance?
To see if we are, based on the itemized, whatever we need, we are supposed to be doing. Just, it's a small section. I have bulleted it, kind of. To see if we are doing what they have asked us to do. If you want to. If not, just let's scan over and discuss. It's whichever way you guys feel comfortable.
Director?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may make a suggestion. It might be a good idea to begin as a reference point, to read only the section which details the powers and duties of the commission.
Yes.
If it's okay with you, I can go ahead and read those out loud.
Yes, please.
Yes, that's good.
And that'll be our starting point. So Section 2.62.120 of the ordinance that established the Arts and Culture Commission reads that the powers and duties generally shall be, that the commission shall be to... The powers and duties of the Arts and Culture Commission shall be to plan and provide by regular reports to the council for the arts in Glendale. To facilitate interaction among artists, to promote art activities and education, to recognize achievement in the arts, to provide a forum or other means for public participation in the arts, to serve as an advisory group on the arts to the council and city boards and commissions, to advise the council on the need for inclusion of arts in economic development, to support and assist existing organizations involved in the arts and/or culture in Glendale, to enforce the city's identity and civic pride through arts and culture, to recognize the importance of the arts in the city's quality of life, and to perform such duties as may be imposed upon it by the council by ordinance or resolution.
I have some questions there. Like, on the first one, it says to plan and provide reports to the council. Do we need to provide a report, or just the minutes that we have, it's considered as a kind of a reporting? Or how does it work?
Mr. Chairman Lee, commissioners, my interpretation is that that would be on an as-needed basis.
Okay.
On an as-needed basis, to check in with the council and provide whatever reports you deemed were necessary to submit on whatever topic you were dealing with.
Okay, that sounds good. The other one is to serve as advisory group on the arts to the council and the city boards and commissions. Are we doing that, or we don't, or we are supposed to be, or is there a different version of we are doing it that sort of, looking at it, it doesn't sort of strike as it happens?
Chairman Lee, commissioners, my interpretation is that's, if it's unclear, it's probably something that needs to be flushed out, and it's probably something that you should discuss. Or maybe at different times, depending on what's going on in the city, it's different or more relevant or more important than other times. So it's probably a little subjective.
Okay. And to advise the council on the need for inclusion of and the role of arts in the economic development. How should that be processed?
Commissioner Lee, if I'm, I think with regard to that point, we did make that recommendation when we approved and sent as a recommendation to the council that we participate again in the Economic Impact Survey. So as with the other items, as Mr. Duran said, they, we might do more, but with respect to that, that piece worked, I think.
When we did it originally? With ESPN?
No, well, this, no, for instance, just this, several months ago, when we, when we were asked to consider the recommendation to proceed with the Economic Impact Study, that was, we reviewed that and we voted to recommend to council that they approve it.
Yeah, see that as one of the things that we've done to advise the council. The other one, the two construction projects that we reviewed, technically, that we, you know, made evaluations toward economic development for the city.
If I may, I think one of the questions for me with regard to advisement to the city with regard to both economic development and other policies, initiatives, et cetera, that the city could be undertaking, is whether we are, as a commission, as we said, looking at the Economic Prosperity Study and recommending that, or looking at things that come to us through the public or our own knowledge that we bring forth and go, gosh, this would be a really good idea. I think the question for me is, how can we be more effective within the city with this regard, with knowing that there's a lot going on in other departments and other parts of the city that are enhancing the arts, enhancing economic development, but that are happening independent of any of our advisement? And in some cases, we might not have the expertise or the knowledge from the community to really, to be able to make a point to that. In other cases, we might. And so my question is, how can we formulate a way of being more effective in all things that are happening, to the extent that we can, whether it's being brought forth by another commission, by a city department specifically, or a city council motion? So that's what that calls into question for me. So as a commission, can we find a way of perhaps advising council about how we might be more effective as a body with regard to the different initiatives and programs that might already be proposed, might be proposed in the future, or that we might be aware of that should be proposed?
I can see your point, and I do agree with that, because otherwise, to do different activities and to represent artists and, you know, do the show and tell and participate in their events, they're all wonderful things that needs to be done. But that does not need that special kind of appointed bodies that are supposed to be doing that. That's good and fair. But it is more participating in what is considered the art and culture of this city and any department that does any activities in that direction. Somehow, there should be either more communication, or we should be part of it, as you said. I'm sure that there are many architectural issues, that it's not the job of this commission to do, but yet we could be participating as the elements on the other sides and the factors that could be done. Because if we are the facade and the face of the art and culture of city of Glendale as a body, as a commission, our role, I think, is more within these three areas or two areas, basically, that I was not very clear about. And the rest, I think we are doing it, and it's good, and we participate in all the different activities. So the major role of art and culture as a governing body or as a body that has been authorized, kind of, I do see more in that domain. So we could work and discuss with the department head and then to see how we could procedureize that, to make it more successful and to be more productive and find what we do more meaningful, both as the role we have for the community and for the city government.
And more helpful, I think, I would hope, to city departments and the city in general, being able to tap the knowledge that we might have as a board. I think informally, we've been talking about that in terms of trying to be more proactive about learning what's happening in different commissions and at different meetings. And beginning, we're looking at putting in requests or invitations to different departments and staff, just to give us an update every now and then of what's going on, since we're not, not by ordinance, we don't have any say over, for, over most things that happen. So people aren't required to come to the commission or ask our advice. So informally, we've been saying, gosh, please, you know, we've been appointed for our expertise and our knowledge, you know, please use us to the extent that you can, so that we can, you know, all together make the city, be a benefit to the city.
Yeah, that's true. You know, sometimes the intention is to come and provide reports, but somehow, there is no systematic way of doing it. So there are times that different departments come and report, there are times that we are completely forgotten. And I'm sure in the hub and hub of whatever they're doing and the clutter of all the work they're doing, it's forgotten. But I don't know, how could it be structured in a way that we would be informed? Or, there was a situation such as somebody was saying that they have contacted art and culture staff about certain information, but because they have heard things are happening, that city is doing different activities, and our staff was not able to respond because she was not aware of that. So since we are the facade, no matter how, so they can include us on things, or they could even share their ideas, but not take our expertise or advise on some of the issues which is not relevant to the, whatever they are doing. That is the only thing. Otherwise, whatever else there is, I do, if you guys agree, I do see that we do most of them in the best way that we can. But I would like us to do much more as far as, you know, many times I've heard our council people talking about the fact that they want to see more interaction between art and culture or the art and entertainment and the businesses in the city of Glendale. They want more productivity in the line. Well, it needs, it is a very interesting subject to look at and work with, because if we are well aware of what is being produced and what are the talents within our realm and domain of the city of Glendale, if it is a systematic information that we could process as needed, and we would know where the businesses are, there are many ways that we could promote our businesses through our entertainment, and as a result, to get businesses to support financially or other ways, the different entertainment businesses that we have in the city. We need to have more, if we are representing the art and culture of the city, we need to have a good study of what are our potentials and how do we saturate that? That means our citizens who live in the city, are they the people who are going to participate in whatever is being offered in the city as far as entertainment goes? And if not, do we need to bring in people from other cities? Do we have to make our, whatever we produce here, whatever is produced here, is something that would attract people from everywhere to come and join and be part of, which would help the economic system and it would help the businesses and restaurants? To have a good idea of what's on and sort of to work more in that area would make it more productive for everyone. And our, and our entertainment business needs the support of the businesses. Without the support of the businesses, they cannot survive and thrive. So there's a lot that could be done. So I want to see how we could do that, how we could help that. Prior to this, we, Commissioner Dever was not with us at the given time, we were supposed to, with the strategic plan that did not work out and it was kind of discarded, or I don't know what happened to it, was that we were supposed to all adopt the way we did it with Americans for Art. We were supposed to communicate with different organizations, not on what they are producing as art, but what do they expect from the city? Or even we were discussing on the dice that maybe we could have organizations adopt an entertainment business and sort of support, kind of, let's say if a, there's a, let's say at the given time, there was Nestle in town. So if they could sort of focus on one entertainment business, and then they would follow up and they would kind of support them. There are different ways. Or to see if brand writers could provide different sources and means. Because to be responsible for the art and culture of a city is a major task. It is much more than going to the events and, you know, cheering them up and having them come and tell what they are doing on sporadic basis. More so, when, each one of us, I'm sure we are invited, we are doing different jobs. Like, some go to Glendale Arts, I do with Glendale, so, Brand Associates, I think Commissioner Kevanyan does with the Glendale Symphony, and you do with the Chamber. And we find fascinating things happening, but they're all just segments here and there. They need to be kind of combined. So when he talks about to reinforce the city's identity and civic pride through art and culture, there is so much being done that it needs to present it, but there needs to be a systematic way of doing it, so people would know what to expect from us and we would know what we need to produce from one month to month when we come and sit on this dice.
On that, I think it's on that point. One of the things that, when I first came on to the commission, I mean, just as a resident in Glendale, one of the frustrations that I had, and I'm sure I'm not alone in this, is that if I wanted to know what was happening at, at the city with regard to the arts, I would go to our website. It was a little outdated, I would look at the Arts and Culture Commission, okay, then I have to go to, but even to find the Arts and Culture Commission, I had to go to the Parks Department, find, oh, we have a program that happens to be arts and culture, and here's how we contact these people, and these are some things that are going on. And now that the city's become more invested with through redevelopment and, and the economic development areas of the city, there's even more things going on. So I know there's been confusion as of late with folks trying to get, oh, I want to learn more about the gate. Well, you can contact, you know, such and such a person. That has been pretty well organized, we've been able to know how to forward people along. But I think from a public perspective, if, if the city really wants to take advantage of everything that they've been doing, being able to put a face on that through the website, that's very concise. And it makes sense to me that if it's with regard to arts and culture, that it comes through the Arts and Culture Department, and that's a little bit more visible on the website, because most people are working in tech, in that technology these days. So that if they wanted to take an art class or teach an art class, apply for the gate project, find out about live-work housing that's going up, find out about public arts, RFPs for artists for, for public art process, if there, there should be one place where an artist or an art patron, anybody can kind of go, oh, wow, look what's happening in Glendale, they really got it together, rather than having to go to the news press or watch a council meeting or happen to know somebody who knows what's going on in the city. I think it's very confusing, and I think for all the investment that the city's putting into it, it's going to be defrayed because people can't see it in a, in a way that makes sense and is easily accessible. And part of that is that communication of being able to know what is happening in the city and being able to communicate that through, I would think, through the Arts and Culture Department, wherever that, however that resides. Because we're doing a little bit through our newsletter, which is another piece, which is less stagnant. I mean, that's more of a moving piece. These are things that we're informing individual artists and arts organizations about, which is part of our mission, which is supporting those organizations. And that's a very, a much more detailed, ever-changing way of communicating. But the other, on the website, would be much more stagnant. And on the third piece of that communication, one thing we also don't have are brochures and, or, or written information that can be provided to the public when we're holding events like the Unity Fest or when any of the Parks and Recs, have tons of events, you go and there's information about the smoking policies, and there's information about, you know, how to save energy costs. I mean, there's things out there, but there's nothing with regard to what's happening on the arts and cultural basis. And maybe that's part of the city's overall plan with the rebranding. I know a lot of things are happening, but it seems like it would really benefit the city in terms of communication to have the website, the newsletter, and the written materials that are succinct and encompass everything arts and culturally relevant within the city of Glendale. And it seems to me that should come through our department and come through the commission, and it would, it would be an asset to Glendale.
Oh, I do see this as, there should be some kind of a procedural thing in place that departments or different projects within the city, whatever they do somehow, not as a, you know, if they have the time or it works for them, but to have a procedure that they need to come and update our staff, or they can come and update in this, when we have our session. So that would be recorded and would stay as part of what goes on. And meanwhile, we would be more or less aware, and when we walk to different walks of things in the community, we would be aware of what goes on as well. So if that takes place, that would be wonderful. Just, we, we need to make sure that it is on a continuous basis. And if any changes within the rights or authority of the art and culture happens, we would like, it would be great that if the head of the department would sort of share with us ahead of time or invite us to that council meeting if things need to be modified, because it helps to be there and to hear and listen. And we do know that we have to follow the lead of the department head. But it just, it makes more sense when we hear all the conversations and we see all the facial expressions. Sometimes we cannot catch it on TV. Because we are part of the city, we want to show what city does, because we are very proud of what this city does for our community. But we want to be better representatives of the city government to our community, and also, we would like to make sure that we include most of the community who is interested to be part of the city in whatever happens in this.
Yeah, and sorry, dominating here, but, no, that's, me...
The guy needs to talk too.
But I...
Waiting my turn here.
Let me just say, one point, I mean, to the, the point of communicating with, with the community, I think one of the pieces of that equation really are the local artists and arts organizations, and some are definitely being served by the programs because they are actively, you know, submitting artwork and submitting to the different programs and benefiting from that. But I suspect that there are a lot of needs within the arts community here that we're unaware of, because they're just not tapped into it, whether it's individual artists or arts organizations. And it just seems to me, having an ongoing kind of concise understanding of what's happening, not only can we communicate that to folks, but we can, and then in turn, at some point, sit down in a, in a public meeting forum, through a survey forum, and understand where our arts community is currently. Because the last thing I would want to find out is that our artists locally are feeling disenfranchised from what's going on, because they're not a part of it, they don't feel like they're being targeted, that things are, that are, that maybe artists outside of Glendale are benefiting more for some reason, or we're bringing more artists in because we're attracting them through a lot of the programs and the housing and things that are happening. But we're not serving the artists here who are having a hard time showing their work, finding space to rehearse, they're moving to other cities that are offering them incentives to move there. And I think if we ignore those artists or organizations that exist here currently, that we're, again, not doing ourselves any favors, since I would love an opportunity to be able to find out from the community what their needs are, and then be able to actively compare that to what is happening locally, so we know where we can advise the city of, you know, this, you've been doing all these great things, here's something that your community is saying that they need, can we add this into that package of things that you're considering?
And mentioning about the two projects, like the hotel and et cetera, that Commissioner Lee was suggesting, that was a great idea, but, you know, as an artist or an art lover or an educator or whichever way I would like to look at myself, I would have liked, for example, to be involved, I would like to have, let's say, the planning department or the design review board or whoever makes the architect, to explain it to us, kind of, what they also like, what they see. Because they are more professional in the area of, they try to see the harmony of whatever the structure is and the artwork is, and they had a concern, I read their ordinance, that, you know, they are worried that somehow, if there is another advisement body, they would just come in and they would put in whatever they like. They're right. I mean, it cannot work that way. It has to be in conjunction, but it should not be just here when these people come and talk to us. It should be more like, we would be included when any of this kind of an occasion arises. So we would be advised into, this is the scope and what we need to see within that scope, not at large and sky is the limit. So that could make, or even if it's not art and culture, and even if it's decided that another decision-making body is going to make that decision, still, it needs to be advised by the group that are looking and checking about the plans and whatever goes on. Because if the art and the culture of the city, we are reflecting it, so if we are part of it, we can help in the areas that we have the expertise, and in the part that we are not, we are going to be advised. So it's kind of a joint effort in anything that has to do with the art in this city.
Okay, Commissioner Kevin?
Okay. I've been listening to my colleagues speak about their ideas and how they think that we should move forward. For me, it's really about looking at the verbs, in terms of what are we doing? As, as Mr. Duran was reading, I was literally just underlining the verbs. And really, and it comes down to two different categories, actually, of what we are supposed to be doing. And I'll just read off my list here. We have facilitate interaction, recognize achievement, provide a forum, support and assist existing organizations, recognize the importance of arts in the city. Now, those, for me, fall in one category. That is the, basically, putting on events or opportunities. Now, there's a whole nother side to this, which is the policymaking side, and, which is advisory group on the arts to the city count, city, excuse me, to the council and city boards and commissions, advise the council, reinforce city's identity, perform duties imposed by city council. Now, what I, what I'm hearing from my colleagues, there is a duality within our body, is that are we going to go the event route, or are we going to go down the policy route? Because right now, we're trying to do both, and it's just not working. It doesn't seem like it is. Because we're constantly having these questions of, you know, is it, you know, does, does council want our expertise? Or, because a lot of the verbs that fall under the event planning side are just opinion. Because I, I think all commissions do that. They're all there to facilitate interaction, they're all there to recognize achievement, they all do that. However, what we're good at doing, our expertise is in the arts side. And if that's not being utilized, then what, really, what, I ask myself this question, what am I doing here? Because anybody can plan an event. It doesn't take five commissioners sitting here and taking up city resources to figure out how to put on an art show. You can hire somebody, have them come in, do the art show, and see you later for another year. We'll call you back next year. We're here to provide policy, in my opinion. And we've had this, we've had, I've been on the commission, what, for six, seven years now? And we, I can't remember a single day, a single meeting where this kind of idea hasn't come up. Are we a policymaking body, or are we, are we an event producer? So I think that's what we have to answer. That, that is my personal goal that I wanted to come out of this, is let's figure out, are we going to go down the policy route, or are we going to go down the event route? Because right now, all I can see is that we're going down the event part, except we're trying to shift over to policymaking decisions, which I'm all in favor for. I think that is our job. We're here to make... We're here to make policy. I mean, if I want to know how to build a building, I'm not going to go ask the Arts and Culture Commission. I'm going to go to the, you know, the city department that is appropriate for that and the commission that is appropriate for that. I'm not going to come to the Arts and Culture. So that means that when there's arts stuff that's happening, whatever it is, whether it's a policy decision or anything, that should be brought to us. And it's not fair that it's not. Because we're the experts in that. I'm sorry, but I count myself as an expert in that field. I've been doing it for my entire life, producing shows, playing different places, doing fundraisers. I know how to do that stuff. I've been doing it. So it's, I really want to find out why that's happening. Is it a time issue? Is there not enough staffing? Is the staff that doesn't have enough time to do that? And I'm talking about not only the Arts and Culture Commission staff, but I'm also talking about the other departments. Do they not have the time to come and talk to us? Do they not, or is it an effort issue where, or they're just not used to it? And that, that does fall in the effort category, in my opinion. Or do they, I mean, I don't know.
Could I say one thing? I don't think it's, we should do this or the other. Based on the ordinance, we should do both.
Well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that.
But the issue is that, the issue is that how we can procedureize. I'm sure there is no malintention, but the fact is that somehow it just disappears within the cracks. And when something is done for a period of time in a certain modality, it continues to build itself and it gets a new structure. Somehow, we have gone away from whatever originally I do believe was the idea. And if I'm wrong, I thought that's a good idea. So we would know that that's not really what we are here, then why do we need to have so specifically described kind of roles of who we should be and what we should represent and all that stuff? So, and I'm sure, again, it's just something that has been not intentionally neglected, but water finds its way through the cracks. This is how we have evolved into just being part of the entertainment supporters.
Then in that case, then, the follow-up question is strategic planning. And I read the original strategic plan when I first came onto the commission, and it was so pie in the sky and there was no support structure to support that. So that all crumbled as well. So what do we do now, is the question? What, what is the next step in the procedure to get all these cracks, you know, filled up? How do we do that?
Well, I suppose that's why we all gathered and we requested this study session. So with the help of the department head and our legal advice and all these people who are here, we'll sit and see. This is what is the final or the last ordinance, which says what is expected of us. So we need to sit and plan accordingly and then discuss with the department head and other departments, because somewhere, again, in the ordinance, it says that any time we need advisement from any department at ours and others of the city of Glendale, sort of, we should get the guidance and leadership in how things could work better and eventually sort of finalize it through Mr. Duran into what needs to be done. So we need to walk or find our walk through the city. And by this low mini-meeting that we have, kind of see how we need to do that or to ask the advice, how this should be done. So we would do exactly what is here, not just the show and tell part of the business, but also the other part that this group has been appointed with an authority. And from what I see slowly, that authority is dissolving and disappearing and redefined and remodeled somewhere all over. And, and it's done in other departments. But yet, I don't think until we had this issue at hand, that we reviewed all the other ordinances to see where we stand. And then, at different times, I do hear, you know, maybe this is a personal problem, though. I, in my life, I have been very successful. I'm very proud of it every year of my life. I've done lots of mistakes, but I have enough to be proud of. Yet, at the council, many times, I do see that they are not, sometimes they're okay, but sometimes they're not as happy as they should be. I want them really to be very proud of their Art and Culture Commission. And it doesn't matter who the commissioner is, any given time, at this point, it is us. So I want us to do a good job, so they would be very proud of us. Maybe I have been the teacher's pet for too long, I don't know, but this is basically what needs to happen. We need to do our job right. We need to do, to serve right. And we need to get the direction and advice of the people who are in charge, who know how this could be done, so they would facilitate that for us.
A few, a few thoughts on the conversation. First, it has been my observation over the years that, well, certainly that all of our departments are strapped. And so coordinating efforts, or, and I don't think the suggestion was, but I wanted to make clear, that they, that to communicate better, which I agree is a good goal, among the commissions doing arts, works, libraries, parks and recreation, and us, it would be nice to coordinate more. It's hard as a, as a Brown Act body, so we can't do it all at once. Most of the work of the commissions, a good deal of the work of the commission, certainly of our commission, is really staff. So we're really asking staff to report back and forth. I would love, so, so the first point is it's hard. We all have the Brown Act. Only two of us can be a part of any work team. And if we're there to, as I see it, support and advise, we can't really set policy, but we can make recommendations to policy. Those, those jobs are, are limited, but the real support would best be done by as many bodies as we can get. So, but it's hard to do that as a Brown Act commission. I would be interested, perhaps, as a step toward a website that includes all of the arts items, as Commissioner Dever suggested, you know, the city arts site, whatever they call it, that perhaps we get subcommittees or at least one from each of the commissions or the staff from libraries and parks to sit down for lunch or something and, and talk about that process. How we could, how we could without, in the least labor-intensive way, facilitate that sharing of information so that whatever the site is, we have one that serves the city to, to let people know what's going on.
Question, is it one of us to sit with them or one of them to come and sit with us?
No, I'm talking about not a meeting here.
I know, but casually eating lunch or dinner or talking chit-chatting.
All of them, all of them together. Nobody's reporting to anybody. We have somebody from the library, maybe a commissioner and a staff person, maybe a commissioner and, and Ms. Marashian, maybe, you know, a team who could go and just talk about how each of their groups plans things, where the information goes, how we can, how we can best connect it. That, that's my little suggestion for the day.
Commissioner Lee, if I may, commissioners, it sounds like what you're talking about is maybe getting a small group together to analyze the feasibility of potentially developing a single art and culture webpage for the city, which would be representative of everything that all of the departments are doing, as well as other key art community organizations and the business of the Arts and Culture Commission. It sounds like that's...
I think that's a fair recap. Thank you.
I have a question. Don't we already, isn't that already in place? Do not, don't we already have, don't we have a website dedicated to arts in Glendale?
Yes, of course, if you remember, if the commission remembers, back in 2008, when we were just doing our very first open studio tour, when I started working here, we also included the new website, glendaleartsandculture.org. And the original plan was to have all our future projects, policies, everything related to the Glendale Arts and Culture to include on that website. Since then, we have done several other projects, but as of now, we only, only a project that we have on that site is the Open Studio Tour. And it's a very time-intensive project to update the website and have someone actually working there all the time, updating and connecting all the departments also in the city. But the other thing, back in 2009... We do have that, or we need... Yes, of course, we do have the website, we have the domain, we presented you...
We've had it for years.
We have presented the program for the website. And if the commission remembers, back in 2009, only 50 hours was approved for the website project. That's why since then, due to our limited resources, we were not able to go back and update the website.
And actually, that's what I was going to say, is that we've tried the website route, that hasn't worked. It's been, what, three years now? Two or three years? And that hasn't worked. So we, what I'm hearing is that we're constantly talking about the same ideas over and over again, trying to improve them somehow. For me, I don't work that way, myself personally. If I reach a wall with a certain idea, it's time to move on, time to think of something else. So this website idea did not work for us in terms of building a cohesiveness between departments and et cetera. It, as far as I'm concerned, the time that it's going to take to get all the input for this website, that same thing could be written, typed up in an email and sent to another member of another department. So the interdepartmental communication has to, has to really be there.
It doesn't mean that the website idea didn't work. It means that the timing was not right. We didn't have enough time, enough, enough resources. But as an alternative to, to have a better effective communication, we started the in-newsletter, which is almost like a website. It's visually effective, it has all the news. However, it's not out there all the time, so people can go and update their information.
Here's my question. Are you, is there ever going to be enough time to make that website run the way it should? I don't think, I personally don't think so.
Well, I don't have an answer for that. But I think website is a great idea and we should work for that.
I completely agree with that. However, if the, if the resources are never going to be allotted to make that thing run effectively, then what's the point?
Well, maybe that's where we come in. Let's see if we can find a solution. For example, what comes to mind is, you know, this is just out there, maybe each department, if they have an event that's related, maybe they can have access to the website and just input it. So if, this way, it's not one person that's, that's doing it, each, each department will spend a few minutes, hey, we got Caesar Chavez function, somebody just enters it real quick and it's in, it's in there. Now, if that's the case, then I think staff will be using less time.
Chairperson Lee, may I say, in, in my presentation of this, I was not anticipating the website as being something that's going to be, have to be updated on a, on a monthly basis or with regard to events. Glendale Arts, as a nonprofit in, in the community, has invested time and resources in creating a community calendar. In my mind, if somebody came to the city of Glendale's website to find out what was happening in, you know, in the city in general or being, or from the city itself, there would be a link, Glendale Arts hosts this calendar. So in my mind, the website is intensive initially in trying to coordinate the information, but not on an ongoing basis. I think the newsletter, which we do have more resources to do, kind of updates that with regard to events, to those who have specifically requested, we continue to be updated. To, to your point about other solutions or other departments, my question is, we have an economic development department, the Think Glendale and all, and through the redevelopment agency, to the extent that that's in existence. But I'm wondering what resources or what are available either at a staff or a budget level? Because this is not just about the Arts and Culture Commission, this is about the city of Glendale's representation of the work that it's been doing and the money that it's been investing. So whether this is something that can be handled internally at the city with regard to how the budgets work, whether it's under somebody else's budget or somebody else's staff, if it's handled through the Arts and Culture Commission, I'm just, I'm unaware of what the flexibility would be. That's certainly a staff issue, not a commission issue, but that would be my suggestion, I think, which is in line with what you were talking about as well.
And actually, to kind of piggyback on that, what, in terms of this, the website idea, I have no problem doing any kind of website with any kind of time allotted or not allotted. It doesn't make a difference for me. But it seems like that is just another event that we're doing, like Open Studio Tour. It's a once-a-year thing that we're going to spend some time doing. But really, for me, solving, the solution to the problems that we're facing is internally for us as a body, is a policy issue within us. And I think that is, that, we need to set up a foundation for, then we can build some kind of website or something, or we can do all the other events that we are doing. But without, without having some kind of policy where we know where we're going and we have trajectory, we're never going to get to any of this. Because it, lately, I've been watching a lot of those home improvement shows, you know, where the guy goes in and inspects the house and he realizes that there's a really beautiful wall on top of, and right behind it is literally the foundation and it doesn't even touch the earth. And it's very scary to watch that because it looks like a beautiful house on the outside. And I don't want us to create that. I want us to really tear down the wall, get to the foundation, let's build a solid foundation, and then from there, we can do whatever we'd like, whatever this commission, this body can do. And to reach our full fruition. Because otherwise, it seems like, we have, like I said, we've had this, this is not the first time we've had this conversation. I think at least three or four of us have been around that long. So we keep trying to reinvent the wheel without saying, hey, wait a minute, maybe our wheel is not a wheel, it's a square. So let's look at that, let's look at the policy and let's, let's take care of that. And I do think that, as commissioners, yes, we do play a role in that, but I do think a lot of that does come from, from the staffing of it as well. It does come from the department.
Commissioner Lee, Chairperson Lee, this is really a question for Mr. Duran. And I, it, I would be very interested in hearing at an upcoming meeting, the status. I don't believe we ever heard the report, any report that came out of the series of community interviews and city, city-coordinated interviews with community members. I mean, first, along with Glendale Arts, there was a series of meetings that, that our commission participated in when, when Glendale Arts reorganized. After that, there was a series of meetings, I believe it, at Councilman Draymond's request. And there were meetings with members of the community. But we have never heard, and I'm not aware that that, that any report came out of that. So I would love to hear whatever status there is at some point, whether that project was shelved, given all of the other concerns of the city, or, or just where it is. Because I, you know, I'd love to see what's there, but I don't know, perhaps it wasn't finalized and that's why it was shelved. But I think that would help us.
That would be good.
Because we did, you know, members of the community spend a good deal of time giving input and asking, making their suggestions.
Since Mr. Duran is new and he probably is not aware of the study and other research that was done in the community about arts and culture and organizations and the needs of the art community, since then, we haven't heard anything, if there was a finalized report to the council or maybe one of those items. But I'm sure if there was something, we would have known. Perhaps in the near future, a report, we can, actually, staff can contact the library's director to see, because Cindy Clary was in charge of preparing the report, I can check and see if that was the status of that.
Was that report not done in conjunction with the, the new strategic plan that we were going to create?
Yes.
That was later. We've, we, we sort of closed out that effort to update the strategic plan. This was, this was a subsequent... This was, this was a subsequent effort.
Okay.
As I recall, not initiated principally by Arts and Culture, but-
By the council.
By the council-
I believe that-
-with regard to arts and culture, and, and the, and the needs of the community, and the desires of the community.
I think the idea was creating, the idea of creating an arts council-
Yes.
-related to the idea. That's how the report and the research was started.
So I could recall back in, sometime in '08, somewhere about, I think December, they actually concluded the consultant's work, and we did discuss what the paperwork.
Not here, not, not in this commission.
I remember that I had asked about it, and then we, we looked over a few of the items.
Not, not the one you're talking about.
This was not the consultant's work we're talking about, this was city work. The consultant's work, Mr. David Plattner, we, we sort of stopped that, ran out of money, stopped that, and then subsequently, the, the council began a series of interviews, and I know I was interviewed as part of that.
Oh, okay, okay, after the consultant-
Commissioner Wagner is right. Well, from what we see, of course, web actually is a very important and very strong issue, that's the source of information, it needs to be there, just a question. With Glendale Arts, is it, do they have everything that goes on in the city, or mainly they have the calendar of their own events, their web?
Well, I'm not the representative, I understand, yeah.
It's broader, there, when Glendale Arts reorganized, they developed their calendar to, it's not just the Alex, or just their events.
So it's everything that goes on in the city.
Well, that's-
That people submit.
Yeah, to the extent-
Yes.
-to the extent that whoever's in the community that gives them the information.
Okay, so this means that we do not need to have that, and Glendale Arts would, I mean, one source should do it, it should, not everybody should do the same thing, so that's the idea, I want to make sure where we are.
Well, but if someone looks at the city website, and we're a city, you know, that, as Commissioner Dever said, we could have a link, that would be a logical, that would, would seem logical.
Yes, you are exactly right.
That we are, by that very, in that very act, doing what we're asked to do, supporting other organizations, who are also supporting other organizations in the community.
So from what I see, we need some kind of staff time, or budget, or something that would put everything together, and keep an eye to make sure that it is current, and it's ongoing. I know you're nodding your head, but I'm saying, I remember when people are planning, usually, even in architecture nowadays, they say, you go with the sky is the limit, then we will downsize it to what is possible, because you cannot stifle ideas by saying no at the beginning, so that is, that's major. So, the, one thing is to be source of information, and for that, we need additional resources for that. The other one is, while we are doing the part that you read, one part that we do, whatever we have to introduce to the community, and et cetera, but the part is that for us to participate in those decision-makings is lacking, so that is, those are the three parts. So, one, we need to see how we can do, if we can unfreeze the money or something, to get more staff time, or, as Commissioner Dever said, to work with different departments, and to see how could that, how could we kind of financially do different things between departments to make this happen. And then, Mr. Duran and our legal advise, will check into how we could be more participating into the advisory part of the different things, because we are representing art and culture. Otherwise, then we don't need an art and culture commission, and we could say, let's say, whatever commission, designing, or whatever it is, in the city of Glendale existing, we don't need to create new ones, even art council, I was very surprised, you know, it's just when we have one, how would they be different by this, whatever we have at the present time, or if need be, then they need to requalify the people that they need to take for the art and culture, because art and culture should be the city. And, and that is where we are now. It needs to be modified by the role of the commissioners, that could be one thing. We should be combined, and we should work in close conjunction with different departments to make the advisory part right, then that needs to be done. So something needs to be done in the effect that everybody would feel very comfortable about what is created.
Director?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the duties of the Arts and Culture Commission are very clear in the ordinance.
Yes.
And it's interesting, because I could also read, read the verbs, and get a different take on, on, possibly your interpretation. I don't interpret this as the commission being necessarily proactive, like producing the events, and getting out there, and making policy decisions, but again, it says things like facilitate interaction among artists. Does the commission do that already? Are there projects that we work on throughout the year? We are facilitating the interaction among the artists, then, then we're fulfilling our duties to promote art activities. Do we promote art activities on a monthly basis? Then we are fulfilling our duty, and in addition to promoting education. Do we recognize achievement in the arts, as part of the duties of this commission on a regular basis? I think we do. Do we provide a forum, or other means for public participation in art projects? I, I think we do, and we participate in those projects as well. And, very importantly, to serve as an advisory group versus a policymaking group. You give advice to the city council, and it's up to the city council, you know, to what extent it adheres to your advice, and to advise the council on economic development, or the inclusion of arts in economic development, again, it's an advisory role, to support and assist existing organizations. Again, not do things with organizations, but support their efforts as it relates to the arts. So I, I think you're, you're in large part fulfilling the duties of the ordinance. Now, if you feel that you should, that your duties should be expanded, that's another question, and obviously, that would take a discussion and policy direction on the part of the council, which we currently don't have. And, and some of what we're talking about does indeed, is indeed a matter of, of resources, and having the resources to, to carry out in any expanded role that, that the commission might, might want. And, and/or, in terms of being more active, in terms of policy, and, and approving projects, my understanding is that we'll be doing that on a case-by-case basis. I think there's going to be a couple of public art projects that we'll be bringing to you, probably at the next meeting, where we will be asking for review, and recommendations for us to forward to the, and that's, that's my, my take on, on what duties are of the commission.
Commissioner Kevan?
Mr. Duran, with all due respect, I don't think the role of this commission is just for straight fulfillment. Art is beyond any kind of fulfillment. Art is about going where only your imagination can take you. I mean, I'm not, I'm not naive enough to expect that, you know, within a city, within a governmental body, that we can do exactly that. However, I, I think it's beyond that. I mean, when we're constantly hearing from our constituents that they want spaces to be created, and this and that, I, I don't know what to tell them. And, and not only that, but even from this very dais, Councilman Draymond has many times said that Glendale does not have a history for being an arts-supporting community. So that's what we're trying to do here, that's a huge task. That's not, and, and it's not about, you know, yeah, of course, our, we are, actually, I absolutely agree with you, we, we are fulfilling exactly what it says here, but when our constituents come back to us and say, hey, we're not happy with this, and it's not just one person or two people, it's a whole community of artists, that are living out in the woodworks that we don't know about, that are friends with us personally, and come in, come in contact with us regularly. Those are the people who are coming up to us and say, hey, so when are you going to get some kind of project started about this? And these are huge issues. Commissioner Dever has constantly talked about workspace, and loft, and artist lofts, and et cetera, et cetera. I don't see that anywhere within the specific words of, of the ordinance, but that doesn't mean that we can't try to do something about that, and try to facilitate the opportunity. And that's what I'm, I'm finding myself, I, I mean, I'm not frustrated about it, but it causes me a little bit of concern, where we constantly hit a wall, and again, like I've mentioned before, this is not the first time this has come up. And that's what's troubling to me. That sounds like, hey, when you're talking about a business, a business doesn't work that way. You, you hit a wall, you try to break the wall, and try to move, move past it. You don't just keep hitting the same wall over and over again, that's why you close down your business. So, we need to figure out how to do that, because, again, I agree with you 100%, we are fulfilling the duties and powers of the ordinance, but it's not about only going between, you know, the black and white of the situation. We have constituents, just like city council does. City council hears about all kinds of problems. I'm not saying we have the same authority, or we have the same powers, but we hear about these kinds of things, and we're, we're, we are the representative for the city. So unless they want to make us look bad, or vice versa, I, I don't understand that. I can't reconcile that, that difference, I really can't.
Commissioner Dever, yeah, I do not see it as a wall, it just, somehow, it has disappeared or evaporated. I don't think anybody has raised the wall against anything here, it's just, it has been forgotten, or within the process and procedures, it's always to take the shortcuts. Kind of the shortcuts have mandated some of the things to be eliminated. The parts that you read, you're right, and the two questions I had were the only issues that kind of is not completely in place, and if it needs to be in place, it would be great if, there are such times, not that these people would just come here and ask for our advice, it would be great if anything is being decided with any of the developments, or any of the constructions, or any of the hotels, that the planning department would first, kind of, we would have a small meeting, kind of, they would give us an update of their perspective, and or to say, you know what, guys, on this one, because it has to be strictly this, and the budget is strictly that, so this cannot be done, so somehow there should be more communication between the departments, and anything departments that are dealing with anything that touches the art and culture of the city of Glendale, that's basically it. Otherwise, what happens, let's say, Brand or Central Library does wonderful activities throughout the year, and some of them we are aware of, some of them we are not, unless we go and dig into to see what's happening, and we go to the ones we can, just to cheer them up and to support them. But that is different than the role of being responsible, or to be considered the body that makes decisions, or participates, not decisions, advises, we cannot make decisions, it's not up to us, to, to that, advises the system when it comes to art and culture. So, that part, I think, is the only part that is missing, and I truly, truly, with all the years I've been with the commission, I do not think it was a wall, I do believe it is, it has been evaporated somehow. Things evaporate when, you know, when you have to go through another step, you know, another process and procedure, then it's easier to eliminate a step and procedure, because some of the decisions, or some of the suggestions that, or proposals that were made in different ordinances, somehow it was to cut, if possible, a certain step to facilitate the, the community, or the developer, or et cetera, but if that needs to be done, then there needs to be an understanding within people who are representing the city government, we do, in our role.
Commissioner, let me ask a question, I, I just want to clarify on, on the points that you're making, are we, are you talking specifically about the, the 1% for art piece that's in proposal right now, with regard to how that will be approved, if a developer were to install public art?
That is major, because, you know, and, and I, again, every now and then, we see the staff from that department who come and try to explain things, or they communicate with our staff, which I'm very glad to hear, and, you know, they invite her to sit with them, or she invites the group to come and sit and do different things, yes, but because that 1% art in the city of Glendale, let me tell you, Mr. Duran, after that 1% was approved and finalized with the council, every organization in the city has become very involved. All of them are talking among each other, they email each other, they discuss about that 1% issue. So naturally, that 1% is one of the main factors, 1% and 2%, whichever way, it depends how they need to work on it. And, and, well, different departments, they do things in the name of the art of the city of Glendale, or the planning department tries to do things for urban art, public art. So what does urban and public art mean? Is it separate, is it architecture, or is it the art and culture? If it is art and culture, the portion that has to do with art and culture should be in conjunction, or if it isn't, then it needs to be discussed that on this part, you guys don't need to participate.
Well, and that's my, one of my questions, because I don't think that that's been resolved, if I, if I'm correct, that nothing has been resolved about how that process will take place, but so, as I understand it, or maybe I just don't know, but can, can the commissions combine, if this were, if this were of interest to council as, as a, as an option, is it possible to have, is there ever overlap between commissions with regard to approval? So for instance, could an advisor from the arts commission be appointed as a representative in a, in a voting power on another commission for, for those types of projects, or, you know, so, so that there's representation, if indeed, the council were to decide for that, to go through planning for, for the reasons of concern about architectural, and the budgets and such? But how can, how can we effectively have a, a voice in that decision? That make sense?
Yep.
But from the way I see it, we, we sort of have that, because for, for example, the projects that came before us, it, we make the recommendation if they should proceed forward, or they would have to go back and redo their art plan, before it goes to the other departments.
But what my, what my experience has been the one time, I don't know if there's been more than that, and it was such a preliminary proposal, and having a background in, in real estate development, and housing development, and, and public art, I know that there are a lot of questions that are unanswered, and a lot of things that will change, as budgets, budgets change, and they go back and renegotiate, and so, it was, our, we can provide information at that, at that early level, but so many things are going to change, before that actually gets finalized, and we know there's no requirement for it to ever come back for any of those amended changes. We couldn't, we could say, we, I think we even said, we would like it if you all would come back, if there's an amendment to let us know, but we had no teeth in being able to say, we need this to come back if it, if it differs, you know, 40% from what's being proposed in some way, and that's ridiculous, I mean frankly. I mean, as a developer, if a developer who kind of wanted, you know, intentionally or unintentionally needed to sway from that down the road to make things work, it's, there's no teeth to that.
And then, as a body of decision-makers or advisory, I think it would be so irrelevant if we would make such a, give any kind of advice without being consulted or advised by the department that tries to plan and check and see, architecturally how that sound that is, and whatever is being added on, or is requested, would completely fit in and portray what it needs to. So somehow, there, there needs to be a link, I don't know how that needs to be done, but there needs to be a kind of a, as you said, either people should sit on it, or, we, or when we had the downtown planning, when they were doing, the planning department invited art and culture, we all went and sat there, and things were explained, and, you know, we, we were very well aware of how things were working, and we were aware of the map, and why the decisions were made the way they were, and it was fascinating, and it was, I think it was very respectful as well, because it was very inclusive. So if anything of such nature, the same, we would be invited when they are making decisions, and the same way, like I participate at Brand Associates, I don't have the right of vote, kind of, but I'm advisory, kind of, I sit and listen to whatever happens, and they ask about my input and my advice, but it doesn't change the voting decision. So, that kind of a thing, which was done with the downtown Glendale part was great, if that kind of a thing could be added on, but not on sporadic basis, but it would be a routine, and kind of, because, you know, today we are here, and tomorrow we are not, we need to establish the right grounds or foundations for the art and culture with all the changes. And that 1%, yes, has been major. Now, how major that is, in reality, I, it's not up to me to discuss at this point, but for the whole community, they all stop and ask about that, and they have different understanding of that 1%, kind of, and they want to see if that 1% eventually would trickle down to different organizations who are providing art or not, or there are many other questions in that regards, or even developers, they want to know, okay, when we give that 1%, okay, maybe we do not want it specifically to be an art project somewhere on the wall, or et cetera, but it might be some kind of supporting the art or entertainment within the city, or, let's say, with Alex- Or let's say with Alex Theater or with different things that are going on in the city, they need a lot of support. So there, there's a lot of question. It might not be pertinent, but that would be a very good thing to have a clear, because that 1% has caused a lot of good, good vibes, but a lot of expectations. So we need to see, and then when they approach us, because assuming that the word is Glendale, you know, urban art, private art, public art, and they think we are all very well aware of it and we are not.
So with all that said, I think maybe we should have staff look into how effective we can be, especially with art projects, if, if the, you know, development projects that come to us, as Commissioner Weaver, Eever mentioned, to see if, if it does, will come back to us to, you know, if there's major changes this way, then we will be effective in the decisions, the advice that we're giving to city council and the city.
And could I add on one more thing? The part that we provide, we support, we encourage and et cetera. The actual participation, you know, for us going to different events, that does it. But we do not have any other source or means of supporting really in different ways. We have no monetary or no say in brand money or nothing in that relation. And, and, and the support they want is not just four of us, five of us, one of us participating in their events. It is basically to see how we could guide them. If we do not have any kind of connection with any source that we could be providing guidance or we are not looked upon as an advisory group of people, so we would just go and cheer them up, you know, kind of. But we need to have a little bit more of that. And, and they look upon, usually they say the one who has authority, people take their word better and they, they go to them, they listen to their advice. So if they want us to do that, we need to have some of that advisory rights so the community also would know that. We are going to be conduit, we are going to be connecting different organizations, we are involved and we are, you know, knowledge is power. When you know more of what is happening, you can be much better in facilitating entertainment and businesses. And we do all live and come from different walks of life in the city of Glendale with all of the people that we kind of, they listen to us. So hopefully, we will do something in that direction. So basically, the advisory part and the web part to me is the main, main part that we need to take care of. The advisory is more to be included so we will be better informed. It doesn't need always necessarily that we would advise the different commissions, but we will be informed and we would be part of it. If we are part of the city of Glendale, we need to be part of the things that are related to art and culture, not to the other ones that it's not our kind of logo. So that, and for the web, I don't know how that could be done, but that's a great idea. Because people, when they want to travel to a city, I mean, whoever lives in city of Glendale, more or less we know maybe what happens in the city. But people who want to come and visit, they want to know what's happening during the time they are coming to the city of Glendale. If they choose to come and visit a family member, let's say in the month of April, they try to make their decisions if it's not contingent to their kids being schooled. They want to know what activities, what entertainments, what things are happening during that month. That, that does help the economy of the city because if they know ahead of time what are there, what is the structure. But they don't have to dig and growl between the forest to find the proper tree. It is itemized, it is scheduled, it's put in a nice order. Different departments can send their reports, but we need to have somebody who's going to organize it into a form that it is easier or accessible for the information. If, if we know what goes on in the city, we don't need to have the detail of all the information, but we could have what is happening. And if you want more details, see this number. We should be able to direct, our web system should be able to give the initial information and direct to the organization that is providing with the exact number or email or contact information. That, that is a major way of connecting different businesses and entertainment in the city of Glendale. And then later on, we are more involved. I, I was thinking, when we were thinking to have a recreum for the Mancin Humanity, I was thinking I would get in touch with all the businesses and we would have an incentive such as those who are going to participate, they could have a complimentary dessert. Now, while thinking that people going there from 6:30 to 9, by 9 o'clock they are too hungry, so they'll eat something before they get the complimentary dessert, dessert. And then they might love some of the restaurants we have because on the Ziggot or whatever that famous culinary chart is, not all of them fall in that part, but I do love a lot of diners. It doesn't need to be one of the whatevers, which is in LA Times. But by visiting, we find what are the resources in the city. So to combine things, it is a doable thing, but we need staff time as well to be able to handle, before we had a whole, a full time and a part time, and yet now kind of the time thing is cut. And I don't know how doable it is, but whatever it is, whatever makes it happen, I know that we are all working about the budgets, we're, all that is in place. But if we want something really done, then we need to kind of provide. And if not, we need to tell the community, you know what, because the budget is short, we cannot provide services for six months or a year or this and that because we do not have enough staff time. Or, or, and it is understood, you know, also, I'm not being sarcastic about that, I'm very serious. It's just when we say we are here, and, and it is one of the sophisticated city governments, city of Glendale is very well known, well respected by many, many different communities. And whatever decisions this city is making is very respected by a lot of people who really know how difficult it is to run a city with all the diversity and with all the challenges that we have. But we can make it better by working with each other.
In, in essence of time, I, I, I hope to be correct with all my colleagues. I think the, my, my recommendation would be to maybe ask staff to look into the city website, if they can, number one, put a link for Glendale Arts and to have a headline, you know, if you want to know events going on in the city of Glendale, you know, click. That, that'd be the first step because that will then be able to utilize to us a free community calendar that we don't have the staff, we don't have to update that somebody else, that Glendale Arts is updating. Now, the only thing that we can request is all the city agencies, other commissions to, if they're having an event, to submit it to their calendar. That's the only thing we can request. If they do do that, then it's publicity, it's, it helps them get the word out. And then, then it would be our job to always look into that website. Then we know all the events going on in the city that we're aware of, that then we can, if somebody calls us, asks us about the event, at least we'll know of it and we can point them to the direction if they need more information. Or for ourselves, then we'd be able to look into it and get more information as, as a first part. As a second part, maybe be able to put our, a link to our art and culture website on the front page versus going through hurdles, you know, going through the parks, going through the events, and then to find our, our website. Maybe as, as a request, see if the, you know, if, if the city's okay with putting those two links on the head, on the, on the front page, then it makes it everybody easier that once they go to the city website, they see it right there, click, click, they know the calendar, they know what they need to do and to that effect. I don't know if that sums it up.
For that, we need to check how much staff time is needed because I don't know professionally how much that takes. For me, it would be million hours, for a good expert, maybe it's much less.
Well, it's just, it's just putting two links on there. And then the other, the other things are all done externally.
Well, so that is one part of the deal. The second part was the connecting with different departments. Because people don't come and ask us specifically what Alex Theater is going to have next week. That is something they go through the web, but what we need to know is what is the direction of the city with all the different plans and programs. That's the part that Commissioner Dever was talking about.
Well, that's Glendale Arts. That's why Glendale Arts, and then Alex is under Glendale Arts.
I know, that's the web part. Then I'm summing up because we don't have too much time, we have to go to another meeting as well. And that is that we need to, I think, Duran has already written down, and I think we have already voiced what we need. And just please put my request also, so whenever there are changes or modifications, not specifically in the art and culture ordinance, but it is in the ordinance of other departments with, which overlaps with the art and culture, so we would be informed and if there is a reason for that to improve, to change, to become part of or to be excluded, at least we would feel that we are really part of it. So we need more communication with, within departments.
I have a question. I'm not sure that the, the point of Commissioner Duvanian was, was addressed fully with regard to the foundation and sort of the direction that we are leaving this meeting with. If I, if I understand it correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we should be leaving this meeting with an understanding that we're looking at either moving in one direction, while we recognize that we can do both events and we can do both policy and advisement underneath our ordinance, given the constraints of budget, time, conflict, it, we have, you know, some meanings amongst the commissioners, I believe, towards looking at being more of a policy advising body. Now, I actually think that the website is an advising thing, I don't think of it as a program. I can see that it can be looked at either way. To me, it's something that the city needs to do. I would, you know, think that we should advise the city to do something about that. Now, whether they decide it needs to happen, they're a different department, they need to help arts and culture have more staff and funding to do that, but if they recognize that as, as important, that we have fulfilled our, our role as an advisor to the city on something is very key. But I would hate to leave this meeting without recommendation or request for an upcoming meeting that we address the, the issue of, or the question of, are we pursuing in an advisory capacity over this next, in 2011? And what are our goals with that regard?
And, and I very greatly appreciate that. I was going to bring that up. What our role is as, as an, as an advisory group and how do we plan to make that happen? How do we plan to get, make that happen in, you know, in a timely manner? What, how are we going to get to that end goal and result of us having some kind of advisory role? That's what I would like to see, in some kind of a staff report. And, and, and again, a lot of that has to, is going to come with that. So I was seeing some.
Oh.
Okay.
Chairman Lee, commissioners, I'm not quite sure I understand what, what you're, you're saying.
The, the, the idea of-
You currently have an advisory role. If you wanted to expand any of the duties that are already outlined in the ordinance, that would require policy direction from the city council.
Could I say something?
Which we don't have.
I do believe that we don't want it expanded. We want reinforced, whatever is there, whatever the assumption of that advisory role was to be reinforced and to put into place, not to expand it. We don't need to have, have more advisory role more than whatever really we were supposed to have. Because constantly we hear that in the council, it says, well, we need to designate another decision-making or advisory group about art and culture of the city of Glendale. And I'm always confused about that, that, well, we do have, forget about who's here. We are talking about if this city has a, an art and culture commission, why are they looking for an advisory group for art and culture of city of Glendale? So that is basically the main glitch. And other departments, they don't look at the art and culture as really the advisory. I mean, we are here to help and to do what is right, but, and I do understand again, because I know different heads of departments and I know how good they are and how, what a great job they do. And it's not intentional, it's just I repeat that it has happened in a way, that it has become a procedure, that it has forgotten, been forgotten. So basically, whatever there is, whatever advisory, this is the advisory body for the art and culture. Now, if they need to remodel this, if they need to redefine the role or to see who is supposed to be sitting here, whatever it is, this needs to be taken, taken care of properly. And if people, because based on who, whatever our backgrounds are, we are initially fitting in right with whatever the ordinance says, then, then we need to be included. And whenever we should not, we should be advised or they should be discussing with us so we would know what happens in our different departments and we could cooperate in the best way and in the direction that everything is planned and organized by people who know what they're doing.
I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm kind of rethinking my strategy here and, and I, I really would like to see if my colleagues agree with me. But should we, should we not ask staff to write up, write something and send it in front of city council?
I, I would say absolutely not. I, I think that's our job. If we, if we have something we'd like to do, if we have, as I heard Commissioner Dever, a policy we'd like to address, it's not our role to ask city council what that is or ask staff to tell us, it's up to us. And, and to a large extent, she has done this in doing the newsletter, doing, doing some work. But if there's a, if there's a new direction for us, then let's formulate that direction, bring it back to our next meeting and ask, ask ourselves, is this what we want to do over, you know, within, you know, within our role as defined by the ordinance? I, I just don't see it's staff's role to expound.
Could I say one thing before you, Mr. Duran? I do believe that based on reading the ordinance very carefully, I've studied this in and out, I think, for two weeks, ours and other departments as well. I do believe that we could make this discussion and suggestions, and I think it is the department head, based on the ordinance, that takes all of this. And if there are some points that he's not too sure, he could call us to his office or whatever, and then it would be clarified and it, it would be proposed through him to the council or to whomever it needs to be done. So this is interdepartment, it's going to be done. And this session actually was for Mr. Duran to take all the notes and take all of our concerns. Now, before it is subjected, it would be great because sometimes we all say it in different ways and I become very emotional about things and Commissioner Dever puts it in great eloquence and all that. And then, you know, everybody puts in their own two cents in the thing. So he would check with us kind of to see if it's exactly what was the aim and goal of the commission. And then hereby, he would take care of it because that is what ordinance structures us, that any of such decisions and advisements and directions goes to the director of the department that houses us. So, so that's basically where we are.
Chairman Lee, members of the commission, what seems clear to me is that frustrations on the part of the commissioners include that there is not a more systematic way of being able to keep informed and included of all of the art projects, efforts and initiatives by all of the departments in the city of Glendale. And, and that staff could probably do a better job of figuring out a way that, that could be accomplished, assuming it's not conflicting with, with any other policies of the city. And it's, it's clear that, well, it is to me, that we need to analyze the, the website and our ability to, to maintain information on art in, in a very user-friendly way and have one, one main source of, of contact. And then as the, the newer arts and culture programs and initiatives or, or the whole public art arena and the 1% and 2% continues to evolve, to make sure, again, to the degree that's possible to, to figure out a systematic way of, of keeping the Arts and Culture Commission or, or having a role in, in that, including being able to review aspects of development projects. So that, that sounds to me like that's our, our homework and in the ensuing month or two, that these are assignments that we should, should work on and strive to figure out in fulfilling our role of supporting the arts and culture, the department responsible for supporting the Arts and Culture Commission. That's all we'll attempt.
Thank you very much. And I think by doing that, then we could reinforce the city's identity and civic pride through arts and culture. That means we would, that we would be really in our role, rather than saying, well, I don't know, we don't know, we have no idea.
Okay, last comment from- Yeah, I, I, I'll be very clear about, I'm glad that my, that my rethinking actually made that process happen, stirred it, stirred it up a little bit. That, that was my goal.
Thank you.
I've learned a few things while being up here. And, and I appreciate, Mr. Duran, thank you for taking such great notes and, and really getting down to the core of the issues and coming up with some solutions hopefully. And I, and I do myself personally look forward to reading that, the report. to reading that, the report.
Okay, and then, just briefly, the original strategic plan actually went over a while back, I looked at it and again and again, there was 20, about 26 points brought up in the original strategic plan that was set up by Sheldon Baker in 98. Out of those, there was about nine items that we have not completed, few of those not completed because it's sort of outdated and other things that we, we could be doing. So, in, in thoughts of that, any-
About the, the old strategic plan?
Yeah, that's the original strategic plan.
Well, the, the original strategic plan, I, I think was a little bit pie in the sky, and if the support structure for that financially had been set into place, we would have no problem making that come to fruition, but I think that has to be completely rethought.
But we did pretty good, so far, 20, out of 26 points, we completed, and we're only short nine.
See-
So, you know, it-
I mean, you know, if, go ahead.
I think the strategic plan, the original one, somehow did not function the way it was supposed to, that's why they hired a professional to come and work with the second phase of it to make it more doable for the given time, which again, now, kind of, it's kind of, it's outdated also, and besides, that was not approved or accepted by the City Council. So, since something has been not approved, and even it caused, it went a step further, and it caused some disappointment on behalf of the City Council, so that's not where we need to be. There are lots of changes in the city, we've talked about the basic role and what everybody who is on this dais agrees, on what needs to be done, and where we need to go, and from there on, when things are put in place, then we would strategize, if need be, together, we will have a study session then afterwards, not based on the points that Mr. Duran is going to earn for us, or work on that, then we will see how specifically, in detail, we need to approach things, and how we could be helpful, and how, what would be the share of each one of us in that plan. But we do need to have what you suggested, or I think somebody suggested, I think it was, yes, Commissioner Wagner, that we need to have the result of the survey, because that was something that we started with our own strategic plan, and it was, went way higher, so we don't know what happened to it. So, that would give us another update on what goes on and what people want, and then we have whatever our role based on the ordinance is, then we would have more collaboration with all the departments, and then from there on, we'll need to see how we really can proceed and do what we need to do. The other strategic plan somehow, at this point, is not even-
Mr. Lee, I don't know if you're planning on going through the other items, but okay, good, because I think we're sort of done for today, and we come back in the 21st, correct?
And just to reiterate, any, any questions from guests? Okay.
Yes, we need to thank everybody, because it was a lot of work for them to collect, this will take home, and we study carefully, because it's very interesting, whatever you have of all the other departments, I'm like a little kid at Christmas time, under the Christmas tree, to open up the whole thing and see what's there, and it's a lot of work, and I really appreciate all the departments for cooperating and providing the information, and Mr. Duran reading our emails and responding them, and taking care of every little thing that has been said. So, I'm very grateful for all the commissioners who have given their additional time to just be here, so we could all chit chat and feel a little bit better in, and to find a better way of serving.
So, who's buying dinner?
We have another major meeting in the city now.
Do we have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Move adjournment.
Second. Good chance.
So, we're adjourned?
We're done.
Roll call?
We don't need to vote on-
We don't need to vote on that one.
No, we don't vote.
We're all nodding.
A second's in there.
Okay.
Gavel.
Just gavel it, because that's cute.
Thank you.
There we go.
Thank you very much.